Good evening. I'd like to call the Village Board meeting for the Village of Cary for October 3, 2023 to order with roll call, please.
Collier?
Here.
Stefani?
Here.
Dudek?
Here.
McAlpine?
Here.
Thank you. I will also entertain a motion to allow trustee Rick Walrath to attend our meeting remotely due to a work obligation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Welcome, Rick. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, and indivisible in itsness.
Moving forward, I should really have somebody from the Fire Protection District read this, but I'll go ahead and punt for you, okay, Chief? Is that good? Thank you. Oh, we do. We did have somebody. I'm sorry. I thought they were all here for our beloved Winkelman. Now, moving to the open forum where the public is invited to make an issue-oriented comment of any matter of public concern not otherwise on the agenda. I've had two people sign in. James Gray, that's for item on the agenda, so you'll put up. Joe Roberts? Joe Roberts? Did you want to address the Village Board?
Yes, my dear.
Would you come up and state your name and address and let us know what your concerns are?
I thought there was someone before me. I'm sorry. Good afternoon. My name is Joe Roberts. I was just coming today to discuss an issue that I was having with the Building Inspection Department. I had requested a permit for a deck to be, I'm sorry, for a sliding door to be added to the back of my home, second story, and then a deck to be added later. I did get a quote for our, the bill, they wanted to charge me $140 for the permit for the slider. I was speaking to my neighbors, and they were telling me that they never had to pay for theirs, their slider to be put in. So I did do a FOIA to get the information of the decks that are in my, on my block, my neighborhood, and none of them but one had a permit for the slider, was charged $20. I was charged $140. I do understand there's a time difference, so I want to be respectful to that, that there was years of difference between this process. So 1994 was the one that paid $20. So there's a timeframe between 2000, I mean, 94 and 2023, but I did request from the building director, Brian Simmons, I did request for him to provide any information on how this is broken down. He did explain that there's a service that comes out and, you know, and that comes and does the inspections, and there need to be three for my sliding door, three inspections, and so that's why the charge was so much. But I just wanted them to be transparent and let me know how the breakdown is, like what that, three inspectors from different, because they resource it out. But my problem, my situation is, first of all, when we got the permit, we didn't have the option to service anybody else. You know, we had to come to the village, and no one even let us know that information. We started, obviously, we were processing with the work to be done, but the problem is, I'm just trying to figure out why we were charged this much money. I know that there are some things, I am on HOA, just so you understand, I live in Bright Oaks, so I do understand that there's a process that we have to do with HOA. So I do have to get a permit out. I'm just trying to figure out the process and why it's so much, and why aren't homeowners being told this when we're getting, going for the permit that there is going to be a resourced out and that we're going to be hitting additional charges because we're resourcing people out. Brian wasn't able to tell me that, but we did get, John Finch did tell me personally that he was going to be coming to do it, the inspector, inspection, but now that I'm questioning the amounts, now all the information has changed. So I really do want someone to let me know why we're being charged $140 when there's, on the FOIA, there's other properties that have never paid for this permit, and the other one is only $20. So I think, I'm just going to finish it with this. 2013, I was told that the rules had changed for how they did the permit, and, but I'm just trying to figure out where this, where the money is going, because if we have, first of all, there's never, nothing that was, shows that it's three inspections to be done on one property for one sliding door, you know, to be added. So I'm just trying to figure out if it was just an error, and they just, you know, someone just doesn't want to say, you know, well, we over calculated, or if there, if it's something that can be put in writing that I can be getting, that I can be provided to make the charges make sense.
Okay. I understand your concern. Times have changed a lot since 1994. Cost of doing business is astronomical.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I appreciate you acknowledging that.
Yes.
What I can do is I can have Brian reach out to you. Is this your current number that you had written down on here?
Yeah, and I'll be honest with you. I have, like I said, respectfully, I have been speaking with Brian Nahara, all the, I have been speaking with them about it. I'm just at the end of where, you know, we, I still want to have, I want to see the breakdown. Like, if we, let me just say this. If we're coming to the village to get the permit, if there's other options, and if they're resourcing out someone else, we can, we, you know, I could bring this to the board on my own HOA and say, hey, if the village is going to resource people out and charge us, charges for this, charges for, because there was a charge for them for inspection, then another charge for another inspection, then another charge for another inspection, and then another charge for another inspection. And for me, I'm like, if we're going to be doing that, it should be told to the person when we're pulling the permit, when we're, you know, when we're asking for the permit, they should be able to have it transparent and say, we will be charging you four different charges because this is the way we do business. But the way it looks now is that who's doing business is the, just the village. Like, I'm thinking that the Inspection Department is coming to my home, not a secondary, not a resource out person. So I'm not, I'm not trying to be disrespectful to you. I just will say that if I already hit, if I already hit the edge with Brian, and if I already hit the edge, why would I, why would you put me back in touch with him? This is the reason I'm here today, because I want someone else to take a, to look into this. I'm not saying one of you, but someone else.
No, I see what you're saying. I understand.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
I see, I sense your frustration. I get it. It sounds like we have some explaining to do and how our process works.
Yes.
I could have our village administrator, Eric Morimoto, he can reach out to you. And Eric oversees all the day-to-day operations of the village and all the staff that we have. We can explain to you what our processes are. We just don't have the manpower here to do all the inspections that we have.
No, and I respect that. And I'm going to explain another thing, too. You say that you're Eric. So five days ago, I sent you an email, and I haven't received anything back. I did just look on my email before I came in today, just in case you, you did. I had no idea that you were part of the board. I just knew that on the website, it said your name, and I was reaching out. So I did try avenues here. I'm hoping that when I get here, I don't have to come back again and say I'm still in the same position. I really, I just really want to have some answers. I just want to make sure that I'm not being overcharged and that I'm not being that. And if, Eric, if I can just address you just for a second, if you can just answer one question, and I'll leave. My question is, when we're getting a permit for our home, and I'm on a HOA, is it required that I prove that I have the approval first? I mean, I do have the approval for my HOA, but I could not receive my permit for my, my sliding door until I had to run home and submit that. So what I'm saying is, do we have to, is it mandatory? Is there a requirement? I know it's nice to have for you guys to do business with, with a homeowner, but is it required for a homeowner to have an approval from an HOA prior to getting a permit?
No, there are different layers of approvals with HOAs in particular, and it sounds like you do understand that. That is a standard condition and not just here in other communities that I've worked for. But, but I'll say, I'll, I'll work with Brian to get the background, and we will meet and discuss this.
Okay, I understand it, but I'm sorry. I may, maybe I didn't ask the question properly. As a homeowner with the Village of Cary, is it required for me to have an approval, hand you approval letter from my HOA to give me my permit?
I'm going to let Director Simmons answer that question.
Yeah, and I appreciate, Ms. Roberts and I spoke first time yesterday on this matter, so we're still reviewing the issue, and I responded to her today on something as well. But certainly with an HOA sign-off, if there's exterior improvements that are performed on a property, then yes, we would require a sign-off from the HOA for any exterior improvements to a property.
Okay.
If there's an interior improvement, it might not require an HOA sign-off for an interior improvement to a property. So it depends on the scope of work and what's being proposed, but generally, yes, an HOA requirement is needed for the type of work you propose.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you, Brian, for saying that. And I do, like I said, I did send you an email already back, and I do want to have documentation of that because I was told by, by John Fitch that we did not have to, that it wasn't a requirement. But when you said it was a requirement, I wanted to make sure that, I just want, I just want to be truth, I just want to know the truth.
I get it.
So if I'm getting two different answers, I'm getting different information from some people, I'm not getting answers back from some people, I just want to make sure that we're not, like, I'm not being in this process of being taken, I'm just being treated separately, and I just want to make sure that that's not happening. And that's a lot of money for us to do a permit on that, and I just want to make sure that, that it sounds right. I mean, you know, nothing to $20 to $140, that's a lot, even like I said.
Well, the $140 was for three separate visits, three separate inspections. So what I could do, this is open forum, we typically don't do a dialogue back and forth.
Exactly. I'm sorry. I appreciate it.
No, I understand. I appreciate you being upfront with us, and I can have Eric reach out to you tomorrow. We'll do a deep dive into this and look at some answers for you, okay?
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Did you leave your phone number, just in case? I don't have that email, so I'll make sure you have that.
The phone number's on that slip of paper. Also, I left it on email for you if you wanted to do it.
Okay. I'll double check. I didn't receive the email, but it could have gone into spam or something like that, so I will double check.
Oh, okay. All right. I appreciate it. Thank you.
He's got it now. Thank you. Is there anybody else here who would like to address the Village Board and the open forum? We'll go ahead and close it at 6:13. Moving forward with the proclamation, Fire Protection Week, cooking safety, safety starts with you. Pay attention to the fire protection, October 8 through the 14th, 2022, 23, whereas the Village of Cary is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our community, and whereas U.S. home fires resulted in more than 2,800 deaths in the United States in 2021, according to the National Fire Protection District, the NFPA, and the Fire Departments in the United States responded to 3,000, 30, 338,000 fires, and whereas Cary's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas the 2023 Fire Prevention Week theme, Cooking Safety Starts With You, Pay Attention To Your Fire Protection, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now, therefore, I, Mark Koenig, Mayor of the Village of Cary, do hereby proclaim October 8 through 14th, 2023, as Fire Protection Week throughout the Village of Cary, and I urge all the people of the Village of Cary to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices during Fire Protection Week 2023, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Village of Cary's Fire and Emergency Services dated this third day of October 2023. So if I don't recognize his retirement, it doesn't happen, right? So we're going to move on to, kidding, kidding. Deputy Chief Winkelman. Does this have anything to do with the fact that you tried to pull me over that one time?
No.
No?
I should have wrote you a ticket. I roll the stop sign and I'll shoot. To be honest with you, this is, pull me over, I make sure I stop at that stop sign. It's in downtown here. Well, I'm going to turn this over to our beloved Chief of Village Pat Villan, who's going to sing this young man praises.
I don't sing, but I will talk about him. So we have a real quick PowerPoint in regards to some of the things that Deputy Chief Winkelman has accomplished in his 20-year career with the Village of Cary. Here's the first is initial exposure to law enforcement, as he attended the Illinois State Police Academy, one of four Cary police candidates that attended that particular academy in 2003. You've seen this slide before, except with an additional line here in regards to his retirement, but he was hired April 2, 2003. He was promoted to Sergeant May 20, 2014, Deputy Chief Promotion October 15, 2019, and his retirement officially will be October 9, 2023. You can see here that he's been the Deputy Chief of Field Operations, which means that he's in charge of a lot of people, and he's responsible for the direct delivery of services to the community through our patrol section. He attended the Northwestern University Center for Public Safety School of Police Staff and Command. Who knows, go back. See, Courtney's a little bit fast on the finger there in regards to moving forward. I have many more things to sing praise of. He's always, he's been very active in traffic crash investigation, expertise in investigations with traffic crashes. In fact, he had the idea or was pursuing establishing a collaborative traffic crash investigation team with Lake in the Hills, but we ended up going with a team very similar to a team in Lake County with McHenry City, Johnsburg, Woodstock. It's the major crash assistance team in McHenry County. He coordinates our coffee with Champions, our Special Olympics event that occurs at Dunkin' Donuts, and if you come into the police administrative hall, you'll see all the plaques that are related to the money that we've collected for that particular event. Don't pay attention to how they are in regards to being level or not. He administers our traffic grants, he coordinates our training at department meetings, in the department meetings themselves. He had to navigate COVID-19. He was our COVID-19 czar. He was just recently a participant of our collective bargaining agreement with our police officers, and we were able to agree to a four-year collective bargaining agreement. He has the task of handling scheduling, which is a nightmare sometimes in regards to the department and patrol. He saw a new facility, right? I don't believe that he thought he would ever see a new facility, and he was part of the review process related to that. And most recently, he's been part of the implementation of the pretrial fairness, or people would know that as the Safety Act. So Deputy Chief Winkelman has done a lot in regards to having our department move through some very interesting times. And here's a picture of Deputy Chief Winkelman with Chief Black from Crystal Lake. He attended the School of Police Staff and Command at the Crystal Lake Police Department. Was that 2017?
Yep.
Okay. See, I paid attention. He's a certified eligible police chief, and he was awarded that certification at this village board, at a village board meeting, and that's Chief Laura King, who is currently the President of the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police. I'm reminded on a regular basis that he went to Velpo, or he went to Velparaiso University, and that's the Harvard of Midwest. So I just want everyone to know that he's a very highly educated individual, and he went to Velparaiso University. Here's his family. He's very proud of his family. Chris has his wife Cheryl, Colton, and Kate, and this is a picture of the family by the sign of the old police station. But there's someone that's very special to Deputy Chief Winkelman, and that's his pride and joy, Rusty. So although the left picture is Rusty, the right picture is merely a Welsh Springer Spaniel. That's not Rusty, but depicts what Rusty would look like from a side view. Here's Deputy Chief Winkelman on the roof at Coffee with Champions at Dunkin' Donuts. He's been very active with that and has done that for a very long time. Other events that Deputy Chief Winkelman has participated in is Coffee with a Cop. You can see him with Deputy Chief Nadenoff. There's, you know, coffee and ice cream, something that is universal here. And then Cones with a Cop, you can see he was active there. And then he participated with the department in regards to Shop with a Cop. That's an initiative throughout the county, and we're able to usually have between six and eight families that we can bring to Walmart to purchase Christmas gifts. And then National Light Out, Deputy Chief Winkelman's been very active in regards to that, and this was when we conducted the National Light Out event in front of the now municipal center, but before it was under construction, we did it down Industrial Drive that particular year. He's always been available for community events. Here, he's with Sergeant Sinick, and they were judging cookie baking. And him and Deputy Chief Nadenoff were active with the Cary Pike District in regards to bike rodeo. And this, some candid photos. I just, I don't know where I picked up the photo of him riding the Tiger, but I thought that was appropriate. During COVID, he was very willing to go out and celebrate birthdays and things of that nature in the community, and you'll notice that I am not in the picture where he presented the cake to our C-Com telecommunicators to recognize them in Telecommunicator Week. So we extend our congratulations to Deputy Chief Winkelman and, you know, express that he has good luck in his future endeavors. I appreciate working with him. I know that we have, we've had both very interesting discussions and some good times. So again, we extend our best wishes to him in regards to his future endeavors, and I'd offer Deputy Chief Winkelman the microphone to make some remarks. Well, it's been 20 years. I want to thank the mayor, the board, the chief, village administrator, Deputy Chief Nadenoff, all my coworkers. I've had a good run here. It's really been a great experience, moved up from officer to sergeant to deputy chief, was an accident reconstructionist, and always had support from the village and my coworkers. So, yeah, I've seen the village come a long way. When I started, my, you know, we were in the farmhouse with three sergeants and one deputy chief, and now we have two deputy chief. Now we have five sergeants. We have the new building, the range, the training center. So I've been very fortunate to work here, to say the least. So it's, it's my time to move on, but I do want to thank everyone for all the opportunities that I've had here. It's really been a great career, and I'm very appreciative of that. I would also like to thank my family. My wife Cheryl, she's always been there to support me through all the hours and events and training, and all the unusual schedules that come along with police work. So thank you very much. Same thing for my daughter Kate, and my other family, Paul, and my mom, and my mother-in-law, and I also have a couple other friends and family here. So thank you to everyone. It's really been a great career. Yeah, I'm going to miss, I'm going to miss everyone I work with, and I have to say, you know, thank you. It's been a good time. So I would invite everyone for a coffee and cake reception. It's going to be conducted over here in the break room for the municipal center, and then October 9, we'll have an employee lunch that'll be catered for Deputy Chief Winkelman as well.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. We are thrilled that he is dedicated and has enjoyed this career in the Village of Cary, and great things. I'd like to, I'd like to say that you make, our, our police department makes things better. You know, when you go, when you look at where we were, when I put him in my, out of here, where we were and where we are now, you know, we look at the promises made and the promises kept. We told these guys for years, we're going to build a better place, and we're proud. We're going to get you guys to where I said. We brought it up to Chief, that helped us get here. And I am thrilled with the legacy that you're leaving behind, as the people that have to miss community and present, we're well-known. You will be missed, and we live here in the community, so we know where you are. So thank you very much for everything you did. I want to thank our officers, our sergeants, our records, our members. I think that shows what, what one deputy and chief, that shows that you are.
It's more a white guy.
Is that what I'm saying? And then he's here.
Wait a minute.
That's good. Did I say it wrong? No, but thank you very much to our department. We're very proud. This is something that's sad, David, and it's also an exciting day for you. You're a young man, you've got wonderful things ahead of you. So congratulations and good luck.
We'll wait just a minute till the room clears out. Okay, moving forward, I'm not aware of any trustee reports, nothing here, so we'll go ahead with, I will entertain a motion to approve consent. Agenda items A through D is shown on the village's website and is displayed on the video monitor during the village board meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Walrath?
Yes.
Dudek?
Yes.
Collier?
Yes.
McAlpine?
Yes.
Weinhammer?
Yes.
Stefani?
Yes.
Thank you. Moving to items for separate action, we have one thing on the agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve a waiver of certain application requirements for a planned development application related to the development of the property located on the southeast corner of Hickory Nut Grove Lane and South Rossin Bridge Road.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I'll turn this over to Community Development Director, Brian Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. The request this evening, just to recap, was previously discussed at our last board meeting regarding the waivers potentially for the proposed development of the subject property. Just to remind the board and the public, this is not an approval or consideration of the actual project this evening. It's specifically whether the petitioner is required to submit some of the application requirements necessary for the zoning process should they proceed through that process. So following up on the conversation we had back in September on the process, the developer has provided some additional information, which is provided in the packet before you this evening. As far as the waivers and some of the information that's provided based on staff's review, it's going in the direction that we would like to see for the application. So some of the documentation, the developers indicated that they are looking to submit or are still currently refining. So potentially those would be part of a petition when the zoning application is actually made for a project and goes through our zoning process. So within the memo that you have this evening, there is various correspondence or reactions that we have to the additional documentation that's provided, and whether staff would support the waivers for those particular items. In this particular case, the main one that is provided, the economic analysis study, the petitioner's provided some information that they're intending to provide for the zoning process, should the project go through that process and receive village board approval for annexation and development, and there's the need for a special service area to serve those, the facility or the development, and pay for, help assist with payment for the public improvements. The petitioner is stating that he'll provide additional information for that as process, as needed for the SSA as well. So while it's not a full waiver, staff is supportive of the reduced information from that standpoint, but the other items, as identified, staff would request that they continue to be provided or continue to be developed further as far as what information has been provided to date. That's the actionable item that is up for this evening. Generally, with these discussions, we do have some preliminary discussion regarding the development at the board level as well. the development at the board level as well. Through conversations with the developer, they are seeking some additional feedback on their proposal before a formal submittal, just to verify that they're going in the right direction with the project as far as the concept with the type of housing potentially there, which was discussed at the last meeting, but also some of the overall design for the project. Just an example, the proposed roadways, the developer is looking for potentially the roadways in the development to be public and dedicated, but as they're currently designed, they do not meet the standards for the village as far as the overall right-of-way, where typically a 60-foot right-of-way is required. And the overall right-of-way that's proposed right now is roughly 40 feet. So those are items that the developer can provide some additional concepts or review on their project. But overall, it's whether the board is open to the concept of this site, and if so, the potential relief that would be required as it goes through the zoning process. And I can give more information on that if there's specific questions in that regards as well. But with that, if there are any questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but also we can have the petitioner come forward to provide additional information on what they've submitted since the last meeting.
Once you come back up here, we can continue our conversation. Just state your name and address for the record, too, please.
James Gray, 804 Roberts Road, Barrington, Illinois.
Do we have any questions right now for the petitioner? One of the, one of the things that I strive on is just to make sure that we comply, we give everybody the equal opportunity to, you know, develop properties in the village. I, I think that the project and the type of housing that you are presenting is something that we are in need of. We made that known last time, that you were here a couple weeks ago. One of the concerns that I have is when we are talking about the public right-of-way, the dedication of the roads, that is something that is, we've kind of learned by trial and error. We have a development in town that has what you're proposing, and it does not work well. It does not work well at all. There's a lot of confusion on who maintains the roads. We get a lot of calls from the neighbors in that area stating, why isn't the village following our roads? Well, it's a private road, we don't, they're not dedicated to the village. And then the, with the, the type of development that you're offering, to have ample, you know, street being able to move around the curbs and gutters and things that we demand for all the other developments within the community, I think that's something that we look very seriously at. I think that the project is good. I've got some concerns with a couple of the waivers that you're looking for, but I'd like to kind of hear a little bit more from our board with regards to what they have to say. Nothing? Trustee Dudek? Okay, are your mics on?
Yes.
So talk closer.
Did you want to repeat what you just said, Trustee Collier?
I said I'm the same as Trustee Dudek. I thought we'd have more information, more definitive things brought forward. We don't, I like the project, but not in favor of the waivers at this moment.
Okay. Trustee McAlpine?
I would say that definitely in favor of the, of the project. I think it's a great opportunity to bring some nice housing that is well-needed in the area. The concern, and I echo, I mean, I think we're all in the same boat that we thought that you, because you had said the last meeting, I have, I have a lot of this information. And it looked like a couple of things Brian was saying, okay, we're pretty close to where it is. So my point is, can we get you close enough that we can say, yes, we can, we can live with what you've given us? I don't want you spending extra money like you were talking about. Am I not talking into it enough?
No, I was, we're just because Trustee Walrath is remote and.
Can you hear me, Rick?
And I think we timed out, we switched to a different Zoom call. Apologize. We're just trying to.
I just wanted, I didn't know what was going on behind the screen there. So I, I'm just saying that I think we want, I think we're showing you that we want to work with you, we want to do this stuff. But as we had said in the beginning, without this property being part of the village to begin with, there's a lot of other things that go on, that we have moving parts that we just don't know about. As we said, the drainage, the things of that nature. So I don't know if it's something where you can get it closer, because Brian said you were getting close on some of these issues, but we're just not quite there. But, you know, I think I have to reiterate what everyone else is saying, and that's that we just don't have enough information to be able to grant you a waiver at this point.
Sure. Trustee Walrath, would you like to weigh in?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate that. I want to reiterate my excitement to have Treeline Partners bring this forward on this parcel, and particularly this type of housing. I think it's most definitely needed. In reviewing all the documentation sent over by staff, to be perfectly frank, I can't sum it up any better than staff did with their analysis and their recommendations. And I, in this particular stance, I wholeheartedly support the staff in not wanting to waive all these different items. I think they're just too critical to the overall success of this. And as we stated in prior meetings, this is not a property we're familiar with. We have not had it in the village before. We need to go through these steps. That's why we have these steps, and we have to follow the rules that we've laid down for ourselves. So I'm fully supportive of staff's recommendation as I stand right now.
Any other comments? Did you have any comments, Tony?
Sure.
Go right ahead.
Well, Mayor and trustees, thank you. Thank you again for having me this evening. Well, I'd have to say generally I agree with Brian as well. So with regard to the staff recommendations, I'm generally fine with that as well. I think that the, you know, the way that the process works is that, you know, this level of detail, there is a little bit of a chicken and an egg process that's going on. And so I think while it would have probably made our lives a little bit easier in terms of the timing of things, if we were able to get a little bit further in terms of knowing where we're at with some of our concept review, then I think that would have been beneficial. Having said that, you know, because Brian and I have spent so much time in conversations with regard to what it is we're doing and how we're doing it, you know, we're well-aware of, of those aspects. So I'd like to apologize. I didn't mean to set expectations, you know, for some of the trustees that you were going to be getting more information, so please accept that apology. Having said that, you know, again, a lot of that information is, you know, it's, it's that type of information where, you know, our injured engineers are doing this every day, we're doing this every day. They're the kind of things that we don't have a lot of concerns of. In fact, since the last meeting, we did give back some more traffic information, and we were actually kind of shocked by how little traffic there is, particularly on the Hickory Nut Grove Lane, which is the road that we're showing most of the, the traffic going on to. So having said that, I don't really have, I mean, this isn't really any kind of a make or break issue for us with regard to these waivers, you know, so just express that. And I apologize if I've, you know, kind of wasted your time or Brian's time with this, you know, this kind of going around in circles with this a little bit. So apologies for that. But really what our, you know, our goal is, and I know this isn't really the action that you're talking about this evening, but, you know, our goal is, is to know if we're close with regard to these, these concept aspects. And in fact, we were talking about that a little bit earlier today. And if I could, I'd like to just go into that briefly if I, if I'm able. And so with regard to that.
Courtney, sorry, I didn't mean to break you. Can you, there you go.
Sorry.
You can have the site plan to walk off.
Yeah. Always love visuals. So, so the way that we're proceeding and through the conversations we've had and the, and the analysis that we've done, we are really looking at the, obviously, a planned development, annexing in, and using the R3 residential zoning as our basis. And so that all works pretty well. However, there are some things that we are, you know, making some modifications with, you know, with regard to some of those requests. And again, not to get the cart in front of the horse with regard to all this, but, but in terms of some of the things that we're actually looking at, you know, there is an allocation for that sustainable development in the architecturally-integrated subdivision requirement. So that's one of the aspects that we're really trying to put, you know, great effort into so that we may be able to see a bit of relief with that. And then of course, you know, this, this idea of including some of the workforce housing. And, and again, trying to do that in a way, using this term, that 10-year blind, so you, you know, you won't necessarily know which units are and which units aren't workforce or market rate housing. So just with regard to that, I, you know, I'd just like to kind of toss that out there a little bit as well, because from what we're requesting now, because of the way that the site plan works, you might be able to speak to that a little bit as well, Brian, but the way that the site plan works, some of the terminology for R3, it really is in some ways handled better with the PUD application of how that negotiation occurs. So, you know, the basis of my question is, and I think we touched on it a little bit last time towards the end of the, the meeting there, you know, if anyone has any significant concerns about what we're presenting at this time, particularly with how it relates to the site plan and, and the relationship of the buildings to different aspects, just speaking to the road, roadway for a moment, the, all of those, all the roadways will meet all of your standard fire truck access geometries. And so there's a software that, again, the engineers use, they put that in there, the radius is all, all pushed through there. So it may, you know, it may look tight with regard to, but, but it actually complies with all those, you know, current fire truck things. So we, we don't, you know, again, we may not have all of the things resolved at this point, but we don't have any massive concerns with regard to that relative to how everything's been laid out. And you can kind of go down through the list on that as well. You know, again, stormwater, traffic, all those aspects.
Anybody else have anything, any comments regarding that? Well, I think I want to just reiterate, I think this is a really good project. I think this would fit in nicely in that particular part of, could be a new area for the village of Cary. Anytime you can annex a piece of property in the village is a good thing.
Right.
Increasing our corporate bounties is a good thing. What I'm most excited about is offering this type of housing to our community. We've got a lot of people that are looking for housing like this right now. People looking, they want to stay in the area, they want to downsize, they want something that's maintenance-free, they want something in a really kind of a cool area, and I think it fits the needs. The one thing, Mr. Gray, that I will reiterate is that this, this by any means is not something, it's not a bad thing. I mean, these are things that, the steps that we have to go through. You know, we have a process that we have to adhere to, just like we talk to any other developer that comes here, we go through the same things. And sometimes I feel that you may think that it's not as important, but it's important for us, that we make long, I mean, this is a generational decision here on a piece of property that we've never had, that will be in perpetuity. We want to make sure we get it right. We want to make sure that you're successful, and if you're successful, we're going to be successful. So I think that's what some of the drawbacks that you're hearing about this is, if we just get, get you over the line with more of that information, I think the board would be a little bit more comfortable. But I think generally speaking, this board is in favor of moving this project forward. We just need to tweak a couple of things and, you know, get the information that we're requesting.
Sure.
Okay? Anything else?
You know, and just in looking at it, it's not really related to the project, but you know, the extension of the pathway or sidewalk that we've talked about from Three Oaks and Rossin Bridge Road, South Rossin Bridge Road down north, would his, with this, looks like there's a sidewalk and on the western side of his project, but is that where, that side of the street where that pathway would be, Eric?
Yes, yes. I can answer that. So from a development standpoint, if this property were to be annexed, we would look for those improvements to be done beyond the property. I don't believe the path exists on this frontage currently.
No.
But certainly as this property develops, we would look for that to be extended as part of the project. And then also with the annex, or the, with the annexation, the right-of-way of Hickory Nut Grove Lane will need to come under our jurisdiction as well. It's currently a township roadway, so when the parcel next to it gets annexed, we're responsible for that roadway at that point. And generally, when that occurs, we require the developer, or a developer, to improve it to our standards. So the roadway may need to be widened or resurfaced to meet current standards, similar to what Rossin Bridge Road was when the Foxford Hill subdivision was developed. So that bike path that's there now ends pretty much at the park district driving range, would be extended at least past this property. And then if we are able to get future funding for the further extension, it can go beyond that as well. That's a long-term project, but certainly as part of this project, that'd be something that we would be requesting a developer to provide for those improvements.
Okay. And then I would, lastly, I just echo the mayor's comments. I mean, when the first developer came, I don't know how many years ago, with the proposal for this property, I think the board at that time was jumping up and down, because we all view it as a beautiful piece of property, you know, with all the trees. And I read, you know, all the different segments for the waivers, and I was very impressed, first time and this time, with the amount of work that you're trying to go through to save trees, because for a lot of reasons, we certainly need them, but that really enhances the look of this kind of development versus just flattening all of it. So I applaud you for that, and I too would apologize if you took my comment as being terse, I didn't mean it that way. The frustration is I wish this was done yesterday. So I'd like it to go forward, and I, I hope you can get your reports done, you know, quickly.
Any other comments? Courtney, could I have the roll call, please? Do you want me to reread the motion?
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll entertain a motion to approve a waiver of certain application requirements for the planned development application related to the development of the property located on the southeast corner of Hickory Nut Grove Lane and South Rossin Bridge Road.
The clarify would be what waivers, if any, the board is willing to grant. So he's currently requesting the six items to be waived. Is the board supportive of all those or any of those, or a specific number of those?
And if none, they would just vote no?
No.
Correct, yeah. If it's all six.
I was under the impression that it was.
So was I.
Yeah, just, yeah, just verify. So if it's, if all six is what the current motion would be to approve all six, then a negative vote or no vote would be against granting those waivers and requiring all the application requirements.
Well, it's my assumption that we were voting on all of them.
So then, for point of clarity, in, in the comments, you do say that staff, for instance, the economic development study, staff is comfortable, blah, blah, blah. It's much different than traffic study where you say staff would recommend that this item not be waived. So for clarity's sake, maybe for our benefit, Brian, could you specifically say yea or nay to which of these you would say today you're okay with us considering for waiver?
Sure. I think the item K, the traffic study, I would not recommend waiving that, just from a standpoint, the petitioner has indicated they do have studies they've performed, they will provide some additional information for that. The economic analysis study, they have provided some information, again, for this analysis. The level of information that's provided here would, I think, would be sufficient to go through the PUD process. But when we get to the SSA, there will need to be significantly more information submitted as part of that, so the waiver potentially could be granted for that based on the information provided to date. But I would not say, when you go to the SSA, we'll, we'll need more information at that stage. And the petitioner has indicated they'll, they'll provide that as well. The environmental statement is going in the direction that it needs to, to comply with code, so I would not recommend a waiver of item M. Item N, same thing, I would not recommend a waiver of that requirement, as they're still putting that information together, and they've indicated they will provide that information. So pending a future submittal, we would require that information to be provided. The off-site utility improvements, again, I would not recommend that waiver, because there will need to be extensions of our existing utilities that would not be on the property to the property. of our existing utilities that would not be on the property, to the property. Uh, so that would be, and the, the plan that's provided is very close to what we would need, uh, from a standpoint, they're showing the sewer, the extension and the water extension. Uh, so that is already information that they're submitted, uh, as of today's date. Um, and likewise, the site, say, drainage plan will be required to comply with the McHenry County Stormwater Ordinance, so I would not recommend waiver of that based on the scope and scale of the project. There will need to be detention provided. Um, they have provided a narrative as far as some of the improvements that would be provided on the property, so they're assembling the information that's necessary for it, but as of today, we don't have it, so I would not recommend the waiver for that.
Thank you, appreciate that. Well, it's five out of six that are, you want to just leave it as it is then?
Well, I'm just thinking, because they're going to have to come back with the economic, um, analysis anyway, so...
Correct.
This will give them an opportunity to compile all the information needed at, at the time. Okay. All right, so we'll let the motion stand as it is. Uh, Courtney, roll call, please.
Dudek?
Um, this is on the vote, right?
Yes.
No.
Winehammer?
No.
McAlpine?
No.
Stefani?
No.
Walrath?
No.
Collier?
No.
Well, there you have that.
Okay.
You know, bear with us. Continue working with Brian. This is a, a really interesting project for us. I think you have unanimous consent of the board that we, we want to move this through, but we just got to get it to where it's easier for us to, you know, get all the information and get you ready to go to the ZPA. So you can work with Brian, continue working with Brian, and he'll get you prepared.
And, and I think that the information will probably come somewhat simultaneously.
Correct.
So these, these items, as well as the further refined concept plan, as well as preliminary engineering, all that'll be coming forward. And so I'm hoping that we won't have any changes.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Gray.
May I ask one question?
Yes.
I'm not going to hold you to a date, but any idea when that would be?
We, we spoke about it earlier today. We're going to try and go as fast as we possibly can. So we're gonna, we're gonna try and keep it moving, and I, I don't want to overstay my welcome, but the other thing we talked a little bit about is this idea of the SSA. And, and talking with, uh, the bond consultants that would actually be doing that, the way that we're thinking about that is, is really just trying to be conservative, is we'll probably do more than one SSA. Because what we don't want to do is we, you know, once you take out that SSA, you have to take it all and you have to spend it all. And so what we don't want to do is put in, you know, 12 acres of infrastructure when, you know, we're not sure what the market's going to do. So I mean, this, we feel like this can easily be done in phases. We think that's a more conservative approach. It's one that we're more comfortable from with, with the financial state, uh, side of it all. So that's, that's one thing. That won't be a surprise in the future if we come back and you see that. Um, and, and the bond council is fine with that, so...
And, and the boards, the conversation that, uh, Mr. Gray and I had was looking at potentially a submittal or petition being submitted before the end of this year to go through our zoning process. Um, obviously they have a timeframe they are looking for potentially approvals for, but I think we'll be seeing a petition coming forward here in the near, very near future.
Okay, thank you. It's a better answer.
All right, thank you very much, Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
Uh, moving on, administrative report?
Uh, nothing this evening.
Okay. Let's go to department heads. Chief Finland?
Uh, we have a coffee with a cop. It'll be conducted over at, uh, Eggville on October 4th. I think we have that...
It'll be tomorrow.
It's just at will. Uh, and I believe that's all, uh, all that information's on Facebook.
Good.
Correct?
Director Newn... On the website.
Facebook.
Director Noonan?
Just a quick update on operations. Uh, brush pickup is taking place this week as well as, uh, hydrant flushing, so if you see them out, uh, they're starting on the north side for brush, uh, north side of 14, south side is next week. Done pretty standard operations from what I hear. Fifty piles yesterday, 30 today, so they'll continue on. As far as downtown, there's a new detour in place, uh, that's, should be, they're, they're working late tonight to try and, uh, finish the brick work on half of the intersection of High and Main. They're hoping to finish, uh, I see the sun's down now, they're going to work till sunset. So if they finish that, we'll see, uh, them switching over and a slight change to the detour going down Janus instead of, uh, through the metro parking lot. We'll have updated maps and everything published, put on the website and distributed, so giving you a heads up on, uh, you'll see those here shortly, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Captain Simmons, nothing? No thing additional, okay. Um, any future agenda items in discussion by the village board? That said, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned at 6:56.